You'll all rise and join me in rendering a pledge allegiance to our flag, followed by our invocation.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me, please? Our dear gracious and heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings of living in a free nation. Thank you for the opportunity to run and serve many great people in the United States and in the city of Prattville. We ask your blessings, your continued blessings, on the United States, in Jesus' name. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin, Counselor Wood, Counselor Brown, Counselor Miller, Counselor Wintergur, Counselor Bowles, Counselor Fink.
Call the meeting to order, Prattville City Council, Tuesday, July the 3rd, 6:02 p.m. The character trait of the month is decisiveness, the ability to recognize key facts and finalize difficult decisions. Fellow councilors, by now you have received copies of the minutes from the City Council Meeting of June the 19th, 2012. At this point, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Fink. Is there any questions or comments about the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the minutes are approved. This time, we will entertain comments from the public about any agenda item. It must be on the agenda item for today. If you have a question or a comment about an agenda item, now's the time. Raise your hand if you'd like to address the council. Seeing none, Mayor, do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, sir. And if I promised to make my report short, will you grant me a point of privilege?
By all means.
Okay. Thank you. And if I could, I'd like to have the CERT team come up. I also put on my hat. I was going to offer it to you earlier, but you got the program going off a little bit sooner than I could. I don't know if everybody in the community knows about CERT, but I'm going to encourage everyone to research it, see exactly what CERT is about. To me, it's about serving the community, giving back to the community, but it's also about giving back to yourself and making yourself not a victim if there happens to be another disaster like we had several years ago with our tornado. But this is just a few of the members. The CERT team was formed, I believe it was in, was it 2008?
2005.
2005, thank you. I knew Mr. Roy Laporte would correct me on that. But anyway, let me move forward with proclamation. And again, thank you for everything that you guys have given back to the community. As mentioned earlier by Council President Wintergur, you have actually helped the community out financially because of all of the participation from your group with the parades and everything else that has really brought us through a lot of the difficult times that we've been in. But thank you. Anyway, here we go. Whereas the Whittier-Nerous earthquake in 1987 underscored the area-wide threat of a major disaster in California, further it confirmed the need for training divisions to meet their immediate needs. The Community Emergency Response Team, CONSET, was developed and implemented by the Los Angeles City Fire Department in 1985. Whereas the Otaga Prattville Community Emergency Response Team was founded in 2003 to better prepare the citizens of this great city and county, whereas there are over 300 dedicated citizens from across central Alabama that volunteer with the Otaga Prattville Community Emergency Response Team. Whereas the Otaga Prattville Community Emergency Response Team is trained on disaster preparedness, disaster fire suppression, disaster medical assessments, light search and rescue, and team organization, whereas the Otaga Prattville Community Emergency Response Team provided disaster assistance following the February 17th, 2008 tornado that struck the city of Prattville. Whereas the Otaga Prattville Community Emergency Response Team assists the Prattville Police Department during training and control assessments. And therefore, I, Bill Gillespie, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2012 as the Otaga Prattville Community Emergency Response Team Month, encourage the residents of Prattville to actively support and take pride in the worthwhile efforts of this organization in our community. With that said, I do salute each and every one of you guys. Thank you.
You want to be a recipient of that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's an honor.
Each and every one of you guys appreciate everything that you do for us.
It's an honor to accept this on behalf of all of our volunteer CERTs in Otaga and Prattville.
Well, thank you. And I'm actually proud to say that I am a member. Obviously, that's what the hat is for, about. But I actually, I think one thing that this CERT team or organization, a little bit different, is the fact that we actually have two mayors that are involved in it, which is Mayor Ward from Otagville and then myself, of course. But if everybody could turn and face Theresa, I think she wants to take a picture of everybody.
Put pretty much up front. Me and Jim in the back.
Oh, we're, hey, we're not finished. Okay, we're getting tired. Getting old.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you again, and thank you, Council President Wintergur, for allowing me that I would say, as I quietly proceed to the back, but with Keith Duck in the crowd, I know that's an impossible task. But as I move forward with my report, I'm going to keep it brief as I do my best at doing that. Oh, I got a timer up here now. Tomorrow's the 4th of July, and as I'm certain anybody is aware, we have a 9:00 a.m. parade that's going to be honoring our Korean veterans. I have my little button tonight that's going to be giving out to all of the family members of Korean War veterans, and my father was one. We have some nice-looking shirts that the Korean War veterans themselves will be wearing. And since Council President Wintergur was on that committee, without that committee's hard work and successful work, we probably would not be having the fireworks that we will be having tomorrow, which will be somewhere around 9:00 o'clock, roughly. But I do need to applaud Kelly Cook, and like I said, with the committee members, department heads, and employees, because I think you'll see a little different look around Pratt Park. Ken Johnson and his crew made a big difference to the entrance to Pratt Park. And so anybody who hasn't been down there yet, if you do go down there tomorrow, you'll definitely see a difference. So if you like it, let me know. If you don't like it, let me know about that also. But if I do look a little bit tired tomorrow, it's because I will be working late into the night with the Lions Club Organization. They're going to be preparing their barbecue for tomorrow. And we also have some pool activities for both the young and the old alike. And that's about as quick and short as I can make my report, Council President.
That was the record, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of our mayor this evening by the councilors? Counselor Bowles.
Are you checking in?
Yes, I guess somebody asked about how we're standing with the four-square.
That was my next question.
For Pratt Park. Right now, we're still in first place. We did drop to second place early this morning. And yes, I am checking in, and I do encourage everybody else to, because it's, there's been some talk, and I think by a vast majority, very positive communications, and just it's been very surprising to me whether the community has really pulled together over this endeavor to acquire this grant. You know, I've been questioned in the past of, is Prattville applying for grants? Prattville applying for grants? And I've had to educate some people about, well, a lot of the grants that you have to apply for, there's always some kind of match, 50-50, 80-20, somewhere along that line. Well, this is a Coca-Cola grant that if we, the way we have to apply for it is by multiple votes. And so if we do win it, we'll end up winning $100,000, and the only way we can win it is with participation of the whole community. And I feel like that everybody in this room, I think, in some shape, form, or fashion has supported it, and I do want to thank you for that.
One more thought on that. I have to say thank you to Theresa Lee, because I have been checking in on my iPad the hard way. She set it up for me tonight the easy way, so now I can get my 28 votes a day in. So if y'all are having a problem, contact Theresa. I know she's probably going to shoot me afterwards, but she can get you set up where you can do it really easy, and we need all the help we can get to win this money. Thank you.
We most certainly do, and yes, she has really been the driving force, her and then my wife also. My wife has been steadily staying up till I don't know what hours in the morning, just continuously voting. But Theresa Lee has helped multiple people, hundreds of people, I believe, to sign up. And so if we do end up winning this grant, I'll definitely have to, and whether we win it or not, I'm going to have to praise her in some ways before this council, possibly to thank her for bringing this on the forefront, because this has made national news, I believe. I know there's a city in New York, New York State, that definitely knows where Prattville, Alabama is. And it's really good to see a community pull together. So like I say, whether we win it or not, through Theresa Lee's hard work, I think that's one area that has really pulled this community together. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for our mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll go into committee reports by the councilors. Counselor Striplin, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. The wastewater committee met Thursday afternoon in June, June the 28th. Committee was provided an update on a continuing problem with a cracked, dropped manhole system at the edge of the RTJ property. This line is a major artery directly to Pine Creek Treatment Plant, carrying a significant amount of wastewater from the eastern portion of our city. Due to the terrain and a 23-foot depth of this box, prior work at the site has been difficult. Repairs are estimated to be in the $30,000 range, funds of which are available. Outside contractors will be hired for site preparation, and the city will purchase pipe and supply new, supply the labor for the new installation. Committee also discussed the possibility of reactivating a dormant lift station that would allow for the transfer of approximately 1 million gallons per day from the Pine Creek Treatment Plant to the Otaga Creek Plant. This transfer would help balance the loads between the two plants and provide additional capacity as new housing developments come online on the eastern side of town. Initial discussions with wastewater personnel indicated an investment of this nature could help defer the construction of new facilities at the Pine Creek Treatment Plant. Committee also reviewed the capital purchases currently being budgeted for the remainder of this year, and the wastewater personnel were encouraged to annually review their five-year capital purchase plan to ensure recommendations were still technologically viable options. Wastewater personnel brought up for discussion the need for additional location to discharge sludge, and the Rice property on County Road 4 was mentioned as a possible location. That's about all we discussed.
Counselor Woods, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In addition to what the mayor has already stated, I'd just like for the public to know that concerning grants of the police department on the public safety is also applying for grants that they are wanting processed right now. I also like to report that the new hires are in place, too. So that's good. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir, no report.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Fink?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move into our agenda. First item on the agenda is a resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. This was the subject of a public hearing earlier this evening. Counselor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, one, is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes, and other vermin; two, may cause the further spread of weeds; three, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property; and four, may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville declared in Resolution Book 2012, Page 065, that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at various addresses in the City of Prattville constituted a public nuisance, and set a public hearing to discuss said nuisances. And whereas notice as required by 11-67-62 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended was provided in Prattville progress by certified mail and by signage on the subject property. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties listed in Resolution Book 2012, Page 065, adopted on June 5, 2012, and determined that the public nuisance still exists, whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville held a required public hearing at 6:00 p.m. on July 3, 2012, permitting the owners of same properties listed in Resolution Book 2012, Page 065, to present evidence, objections, and protests regarding the proposed removal of weeds. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. 204 Allenville Road, 439 Allenville Road, 103 Andarin Court, 108 Andarin Court, 334 Bent Tree Drive, 354 Bent Tree Drive, 103, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, 112, 114, 116, Burning Nemo's Court, 207 Camelia Drive, 221 Camelia Drive, 105, 107, 109, 110, 112, 114, 116, 118 Chimney Ridge, 640 Cook Road, 1758 Edinburgh Street, 1157 Falk Avenue, 313 Festival Drive, 901, 904, 905, 906, 944, 946, 950, 952, 954, 956, 957, 958, 959, 960, 961, 962, 963, 964, 965, 966, 967, 968, 969, 970, 971, 973, 974, 975, 977, 978, 979, 981, 989, 992, 993, 995, 997, and 999 Fireside Drive, 104, 106, 108, 110, 111, 112, 114, and 118 Fireside Loop, 1578 Hawthorne Lane, 111 Isom Street, 113 Isom Street, 1209 Jamestown Drive, 542 Lower Kingston Road, 720 Lower Kingston Road, 108, 110, 111, 112, 113, 115, 117, 119 Mountain Wood Court, 714 Memorial Road, 1598 Rolling Hills Drive, 108 Seventh Street, 110 Seventh Street, 708 Silver Hills Drive, Lot West of 946 Fireside, and South of 116 and 118 Chimney Ridge, vacant lot east of 209 Fifth Street, vacant lot next to 430 East Sixth Street, vacant lot north of 156 Durden Road, vacant lot south of 1181 Upper Kingston Road, vacant lot next on White Oak Court, 1252 Wright Street, 1202 Yorkshire Drive. Be it further resolved that the mayor should have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contracts listed in Attachment A. Any property owner should have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor should keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds, and report such costs to the City Council following their removal. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Fink. Is there any comments or questions pertaining to this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is an ordinance to surplus 1, 1984, International Truck from Vehicle Maintenance Department. Counselor Bowles, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of Vehicle Maintenance Department, and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. 1984 International Truck, VIN number 1HSLCYL4EHA19574. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to scrap said vehicle, and that the proceeds be deposited into the general fund. I so move.
Counselor Bowles has moved this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. By point of order, this ordinance will hold over to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Counselor Wood to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Fink. Any questions or comments about the proposal to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the rules are suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Any questions or comments about this proposed ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand, please. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the ordinance is adopted. Next item is an ordinance to surplus 1, 1994 Ford F-800 from the Sanitation Department. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Sanitation Department, and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. 1994 Ford MED HVYC F-800, VIN number 1FDXK84E6RVA19712. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle through GovDeals.com, and that the proceeds be deposited into the Sanitation Enterprise Fund. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this ordinance for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Fink. By point of order, this will hold over to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Bowles. Any discussion on the proposal to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the rules are suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Any further questions or comments about this proposed ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the ordinance is adopted. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Counselor Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Yes, sir. This is to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes, and other vermin, and may cause the further spread of weeds, may also hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas 11-67-1 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended permits the City Council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determine the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, 201 Alice Lane, 1675 East Main Street, 279 Gardner Road, 104 Irma Lane, 102 Kelsey Place, 104 Kelsey Place, 4906 Street, the vacant lot at corner of Highway 14 East and Interstate Commercial Park Loop, 203 Walker Street, 111 Wright Street. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above-listed addresses to be a public nuisance. And the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Otaga County or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds. And the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the City Council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. on August 7, 2012, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Fink has moved this resolution to set a public hearing. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Miller. Is there any questions or comments about the proposal to, or the resolution to set a public hearing? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the resolution is adopted. This time, the Chair will pass the gavel to the President pro tempore and ask to be recognized to introduce the final item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Please let it be noted, at 6:27, the gavel was passed, and the presiding officer is now myself, actually. Resolution number five is to grant a Charles Bell Rice Estate property access to the City of Prattville wastewater sewer system. Council President Wintergur, will you please introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Resolution to grant Charles Bell Rice Estate property access to the City of Prattville wastewater sewer system, whereas the City of Prattville has established a policy to allow connection to the city's wastewater sewer disposal system to citizens outside the city limits, the city limits by the City Council approval, and whereas the property adjacent to the city limits on County Road 4, known as the Rice Estate property, is seeking such approval, and whereas the former city administration agreed to allow such access as compensation for allowing the City of Prattville a sewer access easement, to place its main trunk line to the Pine Creek wastewater plant and said property, on said property, without any financial considerations. And whereas the aforementioned estate is seeking to clarify this approval for the development of said property, and whereas the estate of Charles Bell Rice is only asking to attach by normal fees and assessments charged by the city in the form of tap-on and impact fees for the use of the city's system. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the estate of Charles Bell Rice is hereby authorized and entitled to access the City of Prattville's wastewater sewer system, and said costs for this service are to be paid in accordance with the city code and the city of the City of Prattville. Mr. Chair, I so move.
The resolution has been moved. Do I have a second? Do I have a second for this resolution? Due to no second, the resolution does fail to come before us. That being said, that does exhaust our agenda. The council will now take public comments from anybody in the audience on any, anything they wish to discuss with us. I guess everybody wants to get out of here quick today, too. Okay, seeing none. Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir. Want to remind everybody about the parade and the activities we have in the park. I do want to commend our city clerk for all of her duties today. She was quite busy, had several people asking for applications for various positions on the city council and the mayor's role, so that arena is open. And so anybody who's interested and has the appropriate funding for that, it's open until the 17th, I believe. But besides that, thank you for all the hard work that you guys have done through your council positions.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Striplin, do you have any comments? Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Presiding Chair. I would just like to let it be known, tomorrow is I would just like to let it be known, tomorrow is Independence Day, and I will be independently working at the Department of Youth Services. So hopefully, I can join you tomorrow afternoon. But I will be with the young men at the Department of Youth Services tomorrow. Thank you.
Counselor Brown? Council President Renninger?
I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and safe Independence Day and remember those who paid the supreme sacrifice to provide the independence and the freedoms that we enjoy.
Councilman Miller?
I'd forgotten that today was the opening for qualifying. Imagine that.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes, I'd like to tell everybody to have a wonderful 4th of July. Hope to see you down here tomorrow at the parade and all the festivities. And please don't forget to check in often, 28 times a day, 30 if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair does not have any comments at this time other than wish everybody a happy 4th of July, be safe. It is hot out there, so... And I understand the pool is going to be open tomorrow for swim. The hours are... After the cardboard boat races, so till 5:00 o'clock. So I would encourage everybody to go utilize those facilities. The next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 17, 2012, at 6:00 PM. I would certainly entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.